We're going to get started. Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and I would like to call this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. The time is six thirty P. M. We will now say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusimano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Drollet is in traffic. He will be here shortly. Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Hearing none. I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Hearing none. There is a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the agenda item as the agenda as presented. Members, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note that Treasurer Drollet is present.
Thank you.
And voting yes.
At six thirty-one.
At six thirty-one.
Very good. Well done. Fighting traffic.
Registered. Just got it in.
It's not up on the screen, though. The results aren't pop-- oh, there they come. All right. That motion passes. Moving on to approval of the bill run. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
Any discussion on the bill run? Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the bill run. Members, please vote. The motion passes. Moving on to item four is approval of the previous meeting's minutes from June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the previous meeting's minutes? Hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Drollet. Members, please vote. Yeah, motion passes. Moving on to public comment. If anyone present wishes to make public comment, please approach the podium. Please remember you have a three-minute time limit, and this public comment is for agenda items only. If you are participating remotely and you wish to comment, please digitally raise your hand, and you will be called on shortly.
Hi. Good evening, Amy Willey. I'm on the agenda later today for my reappointment to the library board, and I just wanted to take a minute. I know I emailed everyone, but I wanted to express to the board and the members or the residents of this township how much I love being on the library board. I've been on it for the past three years, and it's been one of the best experiences of my life. I love making a difference at the library, and I love setting the example for my kids. You can see one of them over there. So I really hope that you'll consider me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willey. Ms. Ivanowski, are there any members participating remotely who wish to make comment?
At this time, sir.
All right. Seeing that there are no more comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Should I move the consent agenda in its entirety?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding consent item five F, as in Frank. Purchase requisition request for professional services at Industries, Inc. I wanted-- the question I had is, was it competitively bid?
Mr. Wanglin? Can you answer that question?
These funds were deposited by the developers, so this is a direct withdrawal from the developer's deposited funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. There is a motion--
Hold on, Mr. Chairman. I have a question regarding subparagraph G, request to approve parcel transmittal one-six-six-one-five-twenty-five mile road for nine thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars in no sense. The question I had is, what's the process? How is the value determined?
Mr. Wanglin? You want to take that one, Crystal?
Yes, I believe this is an easement for the twenty-five-mile-road water main relocation project. So we have a right-of-way agent that we keep-- we keep in-- for using on these types of projects, and she has a formula that she uses in order to determine how to pay out the owners based on easement area and also damages that they would get as a result of putting in the water main or any other improvement that we have that we're constructing.
Could you repeat the first part of that? I didn't hear one word. You said you have a real estate agent?
A right-of-way agent that we use. Yep.
And what is the name of the right-of-way agent?
Margaret Steckity with First Row.
First Row?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cusimano. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Drollet, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. The motion passes. All right. Moving on to presentations. Today we have with us Mr. Colby Miller, the CEO of MedStar Ambulance. And Mr. Miller is going to take us through the current status of our MedStar services.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's good to be back. It's good to see everybody in person. It's been quite some time since I've been here with you. As we are beginning to get back into seeing our municipalities in person, we are presenting annual reports, looking back into two thousand twenty and the services that we provided throughout our service area. As you can imagine, two thousand twenty was a year that was dramatically infected or affected by the COVID pandemic throughout the country. Here in Macomb County and in Macomb Township, our emergency service area was pretty significantly impacted by the impact on our personnel as well as the interfacility and critical care work that we do. So before I start the presentation, I want to take a minute, as I have and will continue, to recognize the people at MedStar, the fire departments that we work with, law enforcement agencies. There were a lot of people that walked away from these careers last year, and there are people who still struggle with staying in these careers today because of the year that we've been through. So as I start my report for you, I can't do it without reflecting on the sacrifices that the team made to keep the services going in the communities. Well, we had people who didn't go home from work for weeks on end. I spent a week on a couch in my office for a little while, just early on, because we didn't know what we were getting into. I'm thankful for our board of directors and the health systems who support us. The moment that we had an indication that there was a pandemic coming towards our country, we purchased a year and a half worth of PPE and had it delivered to our North Crash Building. So two full bays of our ambulance operation became warehouse for PPE. And I'm thankful to say that during the time, our employees never went without PPE and never wore compromised PPE or some of the alternatives that we heard of. We heard of people wearing camping rain parkos or parkas as their protective barrier because they couldn't get medical-grade gear anymore. We weren't affected by that. So we got through it. We're coming out of it now, but I couldn't start a presentation without reflecting on their sacrifice during the year. During the year, due to the pandemic, we had about eighteen thousand hours of our personnel, clinical personnel, lost hours due to infection or clinical restrictions, and we made the decision as MedStar to not put those people on our workers' comp policy. We continued their wage and benefits at full cost through all of their absence and all of their time away from work. We had personnel working extended hours. We let people work up to ninety-six hours. We put additional units into the system, and many of our personnel took advantage of staying in hotel rooms so that they wouldn't go home after a shift to their families, especially early on, not knowing what we were taking home with us or not knowing what was in our clothing or our uniform. So I'm thankful, again, that we were able to do that for our personnel. We had eighteen hospital admissions in our clinical staff. Four people spent time in the ICU, one person twice. We did lose one of our service members. Almost a million dollars in additional PPE in the year, and although we had the infrared light early on, and we've had it for many years, when the pandemic started, we offered our light to any public safety agency within our service area, including other ambulance companies, to come by and have their vehicles deconed with the UV light. And that proved to be pretty effective. There's a picture in the slide here of us doing one of the sheriff cars after they took some money to the jail. Wanted the car cleaned. So glad that we had the resources. There's a little bit of a-- there's a photo of the inside of our garage. This is as the trucks start to arrive with the PPE coming in. So we converted what was a three-bay ambulance garage to a one-bay drive-through that was very busy with two bays just stacked to the ceiling with medical-grade PPE. As you can imagine, and I'm sure as you've heard, the emergency department utilization dropped pretty significantly in April, May, and June. And to be quite honest, it hasn't came back to full capacity yet. We're almost back, but the bars that you see here are the twelve months of two thousand twenty, and you can see where it drops there early in April. It dropped a full twenty-five percent here in Macomb County. And the ED utilization dropped. The turnaround times at the hospital went up dramatically because what went from dropping a patient off in five or ten minutes went to dropping a patient off an hour, an hour and ten, turning the truck around, making a clinical report, and then getting our personnel back in service. Scene times were longer because of PPE. Decontamination at the hospital was longer because of putting the truck back in service. So the volume dropped, but the service time extended far beyond what the drop would have accommodated. So we really were on our heels for quite a while. The response patterns continued about the same throughout the year. The majority of our responses are emergency, lights and siren. The majority, the vast majority of our transports are not emergency, so they're not lights and siren. There's a clinical process that the sheriff's department, or ComTech now, interviews the callers, and we do our best to not use emergency response whenever we don't have to, but still the process is imperfect, and we rely or we lean towards emergency even if we think it might not be. But once the paramedics are on scene, most of the patients that we see are non-emergency patients going to the hospital. The reasons for request in Macomb Township are pretty standard that we see throughout the rest of our service area. Difficulty breathing, obviously, during the COVID year was a little more than it would normally be. Most of them are a little bit more evenly distributed. Sick person is usually the leading request, and everything above one percent is represented on the slide for you here. I won't go through them all, but standard response criteria for the reasons for request in the township. The patient satisfaction for two thousand twenty, as some of you may recall, we use an external patient satisfaction survey tool mailed out to all the patients collected by the external survey company and then the data given to us. The good or very good responses accounted for ninety-seven percent of the survey responses, and you have the full report in front of you. During the time of two thousand twenty, our contract calls for eight minutes or less ninety percent of the time, the two thousand twenty performance was ninety-one percent, and that generated a five-point-four-nine-minute average response time throughout the county or throughout the township during two thousand twenty. We continued with our paramedic and EMT courses. We had to go online. The candidate interviews all switched to online. We did not back down on capital spending, although the year was very difficult financially for us. We did not abandon any of our capital plans. We continue to make our investments. I'm proud that my team was selected to staff the state COVID hospitals. We provided all emergency response into both state COVID hospitals throughout the event, and we have a continuing partnership with Macomb County for congregate care testing throughout the county. And our mobile health paramedic program continued to see patients in Macomb Township and others who are inbound or homebound or high risk of hospital utilization, not in an ambulance, it's in an unmarked vehicle, but we see them in their homes to help them stay out of the hospital. As we move into two thousand twenty on and wrap up the presentation, we are beginning an AED shock and save fundraising initiative. Macomb Township was the recipient of one of our donated AEDs several years ago. We've continued to make these donations across the communities that we serve, and now we're looking for public and business support so that we can buy more and give them out to more communities so that they can be more impactful. I will tell you very, very briefly that I saw an AED save a gentleman's life yesterday. I was at a location where they said, there's somebody not breathing, and I hemmed around about whether I should go or not, and went up, and they had the AED out, had to help him a little bit with bystander use, but one shock, and within twenty-five seconds, the guy was answering questions. So the impact of an AED on cardiac arrest survivability outside of the hospital is incredible. So we're going to match any community funds raised so we can give it back, give more AEDs back out in the community. We will continue our EMT academy. I'm proud to say that on July thirtieth, we will graduate the one-hundredth paid graduate of our EMT academy that we started just this year. So it's difficult to recruit in this business. It's difficult to recruit during a pandemic, and we decided that instead of asking people to join after getting their license, we now pay them as full-time employees to go to EMT training full-time. And the third academy will graduate at the end of this month, and we'll have a hundred new EMTs in our community. So we're proud of that, and we'll continue that. We continue to invest in capital. We are announcing our knock and check program. Macomb Township will be part of that. Any inbound, homebound senior or high risk for hospitalization, we're going to offer them a free monthly check where the paramedic comes by, runs a set of vitals, runs a twelve lead EKG, checks their medication, and provides all of the information to their physician and family members throughout the service area. The Center for Prehospital Care Innovation is a project that we're doing with one of the universities, and then re-engaging our Community Quality Committee and our Physician Innovation Committee to look at the things that we're doing to provide care in the communities, how we can improve the safety of response and the care that we deliver throughout our service area. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any of the board members have any questions?
I got one. Could you just go back to the knock and check?
Sure.
So if I understand it right, you're going to get a list of seniors that meet this or people that meet this criteria that you feel that you need to go check once a week and--
So one of the things that we--
--that this one more time.
Sure. So I'll give you a little bit of an introduction. This community paramedic program that we ran for a couple of years follows up on high-risk patients when they're discharged from the hospital, and we found that by very simple intervention, very simple engagement in their homes, we took the readmission rate from fourteen percent to three percent. So moving that forward, we say, how can we use the same set of skills to just keep people who might be at high risk of a home emergency or they've got an existing condition or whatever? Sometimes their family doesn't live around here to check on them. How can we use the paramedics that are in the community now in their off times or in their downtimes to check on those people? So you'll go on the website, you'll fill out a form, you'll do a little HIPAA consent thing. It's not treatment, it's just evaluation. And then tell us who your doctor is, tell us who your family member is. We'll try to engage with the physician so we understand your clinical baselines. And then once a month, the paramedic calls and says, I'd like to come over at eleven o'clock today, do your in-home assessment, make sure your meds are good, make sure your next physician appointment's set up, make sure you got transportation, check your water, and then electronically send a report to your physician and your family member to let you know that you're doing well. What we think will happen is people will want that more than once a month, and that's actually beneficial because that's where you see the clinical signs changing, that somebody is about to present to the emergency room because the forecasters are crystal clear. But I don't think we'll be able to run it for free for everybody who wants it any more than once a month. So we're going to have to put some structure around what it looks like more frequently. But as a paramedic, I can tell you that seventy-five percent of the people in the back of an ambulance had predictable conditions that had somebody noticed them a day, two, or four ago, they could have said, you probably need to see a doctor, or you're going to be in the ER pretty soon. So how can we use the clinical personnel that we have and the technology and the clinical equipment that we have to bend that curve? It's law enforcement prevention, it's fire prevention, and now we're actually getting into preventing the medical emergencies before they take place.
Good.
That's our plan.
Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your presentation today. How long have you served Macomb Township in this capacity? How long has your firm worked with Macomb Township?
I've been with MedStar since two thousand four, and we've served for all of that time. MedStar has been in existence as a not-for-profit since two thou-- I'm sorry, since nineteen ninety-three, and I believe that they've served during all of that time. And I believe that prior to that, it was our predecessor organization, Ruley's Ambulance, that served the township even before it was MedStar. So as far back as probably anyone can remember, I think the township's been served by either MedStar or a predecessor.
Okay. And I realize that this past year is maybe an outlier in a lot of ways, but have you seen trend lines developing over the last few years in Macomb Township with the growth of township in as far as response times? Are they about the same? Are they going down? Are they going up over the last four or five years? And do you think that we have-- that we need to make adjustments in any way to accommodate some of the demographic changes that are happening in Macomb Township?
So there's-- that's a great question, and there's several questions within the question. Do response times go up when the community density goes up? Yes, they do. Is that an indication of a risk factor in the community? Not likely. We've encouraged our people to slow down. There is no national data that supports ALS response time having an impact on patients, any. The data supports that ambulances driving fast cause accidents. So what we're looking at is what can we do with our first response partners, the fire department partners? How can we make sure that there's appropriate first response on scene, that the ambulance arrives in a safe amount of time, quickly, but not dangerously, quickly, and then transports the patient to the hospital? Then we get into the deeper questions of how do we better interview the patient over the phone to know whether an emergency response is even needed? Because as we see, the vast majority of patients, when they're transported to the hospital, are not emergency. So the response time indicator in EMS, and I spent a-- the focus of my career in the last couple of years has been in response and transport safety. We're using a standard that was developed in nineteen seventy-eight for the EMS industry. There's one study from nineteen seventy-eight that says cardiac arrest patients need to be treated within six minutes. That's the-- we built our entire national EMS system on one study. The highest cardiac arrest save rate in the United States is in King County, Washington. And the reason it's high is not because of ALS response time. In fact, the average ALS response time in King County is twelve minutes. Here, people would be being held painfully accountable for a twelve-minute response time. What they found out in King County is that the response time doesn't matter. CPR, when you graduate from high school, AEDs in every public building and every police cars, that saves lives. The cardiac arrest save rate in King County is half of the next community lower. So we've locked in on response times as an indicator of clinical quality, and in fact, there's no connection between response times and clinical outcomes. So as we work with our community partners, we look at standards, we look at expectations, we look at how we work with our first response partners, and we look at what's really going to make a difference in the community, for the patients, as well as, and I've said somewhat facetiously but very hopefully not, that we have to be careful that we don't kill somebody on the way to a call where somebody wasn't going to die anyway. And as we build these systems where time is the only measure, we set ourselves up for racing to beat a clock that's not applicable to the clinical condition. In law enforcement situations, time matters. In a burning building, time matters. In the vast majority, ninety-seven point nine percent, almost ninety-nine percent of the patients, the response time, the ALS response time, has no impact on clinical outcomes. So what we do in Macomb Township, what we do in the surrounding communities, is really work smart with the community leadership, with public safety in the communities, and design response and transport systems that meet the clinical needs, meet the expectation of the residents, but balance that safety response, balance the fact that there's other public safety partners who are on the scene already. You know, first response, fire departments carry an AED with them, carry advanced airways, and now some of them carry the first line of drugs. So think about this. We're running lights and siren so that we can get a defibrillator and airway and medication on scene that's already there. So the response time bubble is a part of our service in the communities, but as we look at how to best design it with the highest degree of safety going forward, I think it's only one of the components. I think in Macomb Township, we have very reliable service. I think it may have gone up. I think from twenty to nineteen, I think the average response time may have went up a minute, a little less than a minute. I don't have the data handy, but it's nothing to be concerned about. But again, that's us putting AI on the ambulance, telling our personnel, slow down, lower your following distance. You're approaching it, the camera talks to you in the ambulance, lower your following distance. You're approaching an intersection, reduce your speed. You're cornering, reduce your speed. So we're working hard to make sure that that vehicle is operated safely and still meeting a contractual response time, still delivering good clinical outcomes, still working with a fantastic partner with the fire department. But as we continue to develop that relationship, I think we need to expand it beyond just the response time component. Well-- It's a long answer.
Right. And my actual question was, with the changes in Macomb Township, the demographic changes, the growth in population and so forth, is the-- how has your company adjusted or what changes have had need to be made in order to adapt to those changes? For example, you showed a graph of the last twelve months of runs, and with a dip, you know, during the peak of COVID. Over the last five years, our runs going up five percent a year, ten percent a year on average throughout the COVID year, I guess. You know, what changes have you had to do to adapt to the changes that take place in Macomb Township?
More unit hours invested into the township and then better placement of the vehicles when the unit hours are in the township. So if there's two trucks in the township, they're placed here and here. If there's one truck in the township, it's placed here. If there's two trucks in the township but one on the very north side of Clinton, then they're placed in very different locations. So monitoring the demand patterns and monitoring the response patterns as the community grows, because it's not just call volume, as some of us noted tonight, some of it's traffic load that affects how the ambulances move around. So as we monitor those response times, the positioning of the vehicles, and in our system, our positioning changes hour by hour. So we've got the ability to say, if there's two trucks at ten in the morning, they go here and here. But at ten in the afternoon, based on where everybody is, at ten in the evening, where everybody is and what the traffic pattern is, they may go here and here. And our system drives those changes based on historical demand and response patterns. So as the community grows, those adjustments can be made kind of on the fly, if you will, or as the data changes. We're also investing in a new CAD that we'll be implementing January first. That's about a million and a half to us, that monitors all of the traffic feeds from all of the communities, and it moves those ambulances minute by minute. So where they used to sit post for three or four hours at a post before the system told them to move, now they're going to move half a mile down the road, and twenty minutes later, they're going to move half a mile up the road, and twenty minutes later, they're going to move half a mile back or two miles over because of historical demand and the data feed that the CAD is bringing in. So it's a very dynamic process to meet the multiple impacts of a growing community, not just call volume going up. Call volume is going up, not huge, and I don't know the exact percentage, but I could certainly get it. How we handle that call volume and how we deploy resources so that the responses are safe is really the work that lies ahead of us.
Is there a primary metric that you do use or one or two that you do use instead of response time to measure how well you're responding, how well you're meeting the needs? What is the primary factors that you use?
So the two factors that I mentioned, and I didn't mean to go over it too quickly, but we're working with one of the universities, and as soon as the program can see light, we'll have it out for all of our communities to understand. But we're going to engage a PhD student to actually study the outcome of our patients that we take into all of the hospitals and match them back up with the response time that each call got, the resources that were on the scene, and what treatment was provided to them so we can move past this issue of, well, what was the response time? Because the real question is, what was the outcome? You know, that's what-- You know, that's what truly matters. So the clinical scoring of an EMS patient should actually be the clinical care that was delivered and how it affected them. Right now, the measure is patient satisfaction and the feedback that we get from the patients, the feedback that we get from the physicians that receive our patients, our internal QA, we've got a full-time clinical quality staff that reviews the run reports, and then the community standard of response times. But to, but, but again, to expand on the response time thing, I would rather know that we provided, that we had a X-minute response time rather than a Y, and know that we gave the right medications at the right time, through the right route, loaded the patient at the right time, provided the right care during transport, and got to the hospital safely. I would rather hear that described with a two-minute longer response time than we got on scene in three minutes. Because time in a bubble has no impact on clinical care. It's a, it's a long answer again, but we're, we're investing in scholarly resources outside of our organization to study the impact of response, treatment, and transport on the actual clinical outcome of the patient, and then we'll be able to use that data, published, peer-reviewed data, to prevent, to our communities, to talk about how best to structure their EMS systems. Because I think right now, we're all still using the 1978 standard. There wasn't paramedics, there wasn't AEDs, and there wasn't first responders. The system's changed a bit since then.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for Mr. Miller?
Mr. Chairman, go on.
Go ahead, Mr. Cusmano.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Has the anticipated contract changed since negotiated and executed five years ago?
The previous contract had a descending subsidy. Each year, it went down by 20%. The anticipated contract is a zero-subsidy agreement.
And is there, the township doesn't pay your fees other than the subsidy that you're talking about. Is there a fee schedule for the residents who take advantage of emergency transport to healthcare facilities?
Yes, we have a published fee schedule, and we make that available to all of our communities, and then we remind everybody that the, the fee schedule and what we collect from the payers are two different things. And we try to be, we try to provide as many payer scenarios as we can, but with 100 payers out there, it's difficult. But the, I think the average out-of-pocket expense, and I looked at this some time ago for a different project, so I can't tell you that it's exactly Macomb-specific, but I think the average out-of-pocket expense on an emergency ambulance transport runs about $46. So the copays and deductibles, as long as they don't have a high deductible insurance plan, then it's all about the timing of the year, because what your insurance pays in June isn't what it pays in January if you've got a high deductible plan.
Is that fee schedule part of the contract, and will it be good for the full five years, or does it change and shift?
It changes each year. I'm sorry, it has the potential to change each year. We usually increase ours every two or three years. It is part of the contract, and the visibility of it is part of the contract.
And how many employees at 40 hours per week are dedicated to Macomb Township?
We don't, so our, because it's a fluid model, they move around, so I couldn't tell you that there's a specific number of employees. If there's two trucks in the township for eight hours, one truck in the township for 16, and three trucks passing through, we don't, we don't have a direct allocation of mobile hours for personnel hours by community, only because we don't track the movement of the trucks that way.
And what do you see from your company's perspective as being the most important provisions of the contract?
I think the, what we, what we enjoy most about the partnership that we've long enjoyed with Macomb Township is the interaction with the medical first responders from the fire department, the positive feedback that we get from the residents, the ability to serve the community in a, in a pretty known response pattern, provide good clinical care, and frankly, get great feedback from the residents that we serve. The contract is fairly standard across our community, so I can't tell you that there's a Macomb contract advantage in this document. It's pretty standard. But what we enjoy in the relationship in Macomb is the ability to serve, the feedback on the clinical care that we get, on the personnel, the personal feedback we get from the residents, and the engagement with the fire department.
And is the length of the contract at five years typical or atypical of contracts with other municipalities?
We try to do five-year contracts whenever we can. A lot of the municipal boards choose different lengths. Our, our base offer is always five years, only from a capital matching perspective. We try to get our contractual relationships to match our capital spend. But if a municipality, some municipalities don't like to have contract lengths that go longer than their board terms. So they want it to be, you know, whatever that time is, and we're flexible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Trustee Oliver?
I'm good.
You're good? Anyone else, have any questions for Mr. Miller? Okay, I think that concludes our time with Mr. Miller. Thank you for your time, and appreciate the presentation.
Thanks for having me.
All right, moving on to new business. I want to remind any of the department heads that are presenting tonight, unless you're already at a microphone, please step up to the podium. So we're going to move on to item number eight. We have a request to pay construction pay estimate, number one, for the 2021 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCT investigation, project number 0249-0215, to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services for $44,940.46. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Mr. Viviano, and board members. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you asking for permission to approve this first pay cert. Like is already stated, this will be for $44,940.46 and payable to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services. As everyone's aware, they're doing this summer's cleaning and TVing program as part of the CIP plan.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions or discussion from the board? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to pay, pay estimate number one to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services for $44,940.46. The motion passes. Item number nine is a request to pay, Paymar Enterprises for an emergency sewer lead repair on Dartmoor for the amount of $39,919.28. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, again, and board members. Water and Sewers in front of you asking for approval to pay for the emergency repair on Dartmoor Drive. This was in the amount of $39,919.28. Paymar Enterprises is one of the 11 contractors on our pre-qualified list, and this is an item I, I believe I discussed with the supervisor, and was given approval to move forward on this emergency repair. This homeowner had a couple sewer backups, and obviously, we take these very seriously, and time is of the essence, and the green light was given to one of, one of our pre-qualified vendors. I'm recommending we move forward with this payment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions or discussion from the board?
I have one question. Is the homeowner at all responsible for any part of that, or that's all just on the township?
That was on the township.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I talked with Mr. Wanglin earlier today about this. I understand that Paymar was readily available because they were doing work in another project nearby, and that was one of the reasons why they were called on. How long did the repairs take? It was just a matter of two days it was repaired, right?
Right. And so how this, to give you a little background, board members, how this works is, like I stated, we have 11 contractors that are pre-qualified, and, and as Mr. Cusmano stated, this contractor was about roughly a mile away, working on Stillwater Phase 3. They had equipment and men available. So I, you know, I spoke with one of their vice presidents, and he was agreeable to send a crew over right away, and, you know, and that's how these types of situations are From time to time, we have water and sewer emergencies that are more than a department can handle, and this repair would fit into that type of situation more than we could handle. So that's how they were chosen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no more questions. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to pay for the emergency repair to Paymar in the amount of $39,919.28. Members, please vote. Moving on to item 10 is a conditional recommendation of award to DePonyo Contracting, Inc., for the 23-mile road water main replacement, Phase 2, in the amount of $1,977,935. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you again, board members. As you're well aware, the 23-mile road widening project, Water and Sewers making an effort to get our utilities moved back, back out from underneath the influence of the pavement, and this is one of these type projects. This project was presented to all 11 pre-qualified vendors. Five vendors did submit quotes for this project, ranging from as low as the $1,009,000 to as high as $2.1 million, and we are recommending this low bidder be awarded this project. Water and Sewer Engineering have met with this contractor. They understand the scope of the project. We under, we're confident that they can do this project. This project will be done, I think, right after Labor Day is what we were told. So that's well within the timeframe of getting in front of, if you will, the Department of Roads' road widening project.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. And just as a reminder, was this one of the projects as part of our capital improvement plan we adopted last winter?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Wanglin? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cusmano, to award a conditional award for the 23-mile road water main replacement to DePonyo Contracting in the amount of $1,977,935. The motion passes. Moving on to item 11 is a request to pay construction pay estimate, number one, for the 25-mile road in Romeo Plank, Garfield, in Garfield, water main relocation, project number 0249-0203, to CNP Construction in the amount of $263,493. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, board. This will be Paser number one to CNP Construction, the amount of $263,493.0. Again, this is part of the CIP program, and this is part of the, if you will, like I stated earlier, getting our utilities from out underneath the influence of new pavement. And I think as everybody's aware, that is where the new roundabout will be starting here very shortly, and I'm recommending approval of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by trustee Oliver, to pay construction pay estimate number one to CNP Construction for the water main relocation at the Romeo Plank Garfield in 25-mile future roundabout in the amount of $263,493. Members, please vote. The motion passes. Moving on to item 12.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. We have a request authorized to prepare a formal petition for Chelsea Park subdivision paving special assessment district.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Ms. Kozak.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Kozak. I am the engineering manager here with Macomb Township, and I am here tonight representing the engineering department for Jim Van Tifflin, the township engineer. Regarding the Chelsea Park subdivision paving special assessment district, residents from Chelsea Park subdivision have approached the township regarding an SAD for their subdivision. If you've been down their roads recently, you know that they are in terribly poor condition and need replacement, and it's more than just some concrete slabs, it's full reconstruction. By going through the special assessment district process, Macomb Township will be able to submit this project to the Macomb County Department of Roads for consideration in their subdivision reconstruction program to obtain funding for half of the cost, up to $500,000. Typically, the township would put together a cost estimate and an informal petition to determine if there's interest in the project from all the residents within the subdivision. An SAD typically requires 51% of assessable frontage in order to qualify. However, this subdivision, and these residents were actually before us back in 2018, and they were unable to secure signatures in time to meet that same program through the Macomb County Department of Roads. Furthermore, those residents have been in, and they've been talking to their neighbors, and they have provided us evidence that there is support to move forward with a special assessment district. Therefore, instead of going through the informal petition process, and due to the restrictions from the, from the Macomb County Department of Roads reconstruction program deadline, which is October 6th, we are requesting that the board consider moving straight to the formal petition process in order to meet these deadlines. And if this item is approved tonight, we will proceed with, with preparing the formal petition. The petitioners will then have 60 days to obtain the signatures, and if they successfully obtain 51% or more of the assessable front footage, the SAD process will be, will proceed forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kozak. Is there any questions or discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, and maybe to legal counsel. Is it, is the necessity for 51% of the residents necessary for this board to impose an SAD?
It is not. However, it's been the policy of this board to require at least 51% favorable participation by the residents. The board actually has the authority to go forward with an SAD, and however, if 20% of the property owners in that proposed district object, then the township could not proceed necessarily on its own. So there is a provision in there for check and balance in the event that the township wanted to proceed on its own. But generally, this township, as well as many other townships, require an interest of at least 51% before proceeding.
And I have a question for engineering. Is there a, at the college, we have what's called a facility condition index. Is there a way of, or is there an index or some measurement, objective measurement, as to the condition of these roads, including this subdivision's streets?
There is not at this time, but that is something that we're looking into.
Do you want to take that one, or you want me to?
Well, I'll be happy to take it. You can chime in, trustee Cusmano. There is a provision for a grant that we could potentially receive from the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments to conduct a Pazer study. I don't know what Pazer stands for, but essentially, it's an evaluation of residential subdivision roads and an assignment of condition. And unfortunately, we, it hasn't been applied for in the past, so we don't have that in hand. But we are looking to apply for that grant through SEMCOG moving forward. However, if, if Chelsea Park subdivision roads don't finish at the worst possible condition level above the Pazer study, then the system's desperately flawed. I mean, if you have a chance to go down to Chelsea Park subdivision roads, you'll see they probably meet the definition of worst possible condition according to any objective measure that we could put forward.
Have you personally viewed the, the condition of the pavement?
I have.
As have I.
As have I. As have I.
I've driven down it.
I've got pictures here.
I've got a chunk of it in my office, if you'd like me to bring the chunk by.
So in regards to the Pazer study, trustee Cusmano, it's something we hope to proceed with. If SEMCOG awards us the grant, it'll pay for the entire study, and then it'll be something we can rely on for future projects.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That answers my questions. So I guess what we're doing now is approving a formal petition where the township would be involved in putting together the document and making it available to the homeowners association, I assume.
To circulate, yeah.
To circulate.
Correct.
What is the anticipated due date? What is the anticipated due date? I have a note, and I could be wrong. October 6th is the deadline for the...
It would be 60 days.
They have 60... Once the formal petition is prepared, the petitioner will have 60 days to collect those signatures.
From what date? When does that clock start to run?
Whenever we have the formal petition. No, once we have it complete. So we need to... After, if this gets approved, we'll get with legal counsel, and we'll start preparing that formal petition. And there is a little bit of work that needs to be done. I believe we need to pull title, and we need to verify owners so that the petition has that information on there, so they are collecting the proper signatures. But the October 6th deadline that you're referring to, that's actually the Department of Roads reconstruction program deadline that we need to meet.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cuzmano. Any further discussion or questions?
One question, if I could. It seems to me really all we're voting on here is, in the 17-step process, kind of just skipping down to number 11, like not having them go through all the other process first.
The informal process, correct.
Because of the time. My only concern is if there are some residents that say, hey, I don't want to contribute, or I can't afford to contribute to this because it could possibly be a very expensive cost to them. We're not really foregoing that. We're just giving them a little bit, kind of a leg up a little bit in time.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, there may be people that choose not to sign the petition, and they're certainly, they have that right to not sign if they're not interested.
Okay.
The burden does fall on the residents to catch the people at home, convince them of a signature or not a signature. So ultimately, they have to approach each resident and, you know, get permission or lack of permission.
I had done canvassing before for my homeowners association. It was very difficult. I wish them the best, but I'm in favor of this, so that's fine.
Just one quick question. So we make the public clear. Once we... Once this petition reaches 50%, all parties in that SAD will pay for that road.
That is correct.
Okay. Or 51%.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one last question. Is there an amount of money? And is it amateurized over 20 years, I understand, or...
It was 10 years, right?
That's determined by the township board what the schedule of that would be, but typically, in the past, it's been 10 years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is my final question.
Don't tease me. All right, if that's all from the board, we have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by clerk Posey, to authorize the preparation of a formal petition for Chelsea Park subdivision paving special assessment district. Members, please vote. That motion passes. Moving on, item 13 is a request to schedule a public hearing for the street lighting SAD collective resolution for Strathmore site condominiums two for August 11th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Is there any questions or discussion? Oh, excuse me. Ms. Kozak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We are requesting the scheduling of a public hearing for a corrective resolution of the street lighting SAD for Strathmore site condominiums due to administrative errors. The errors included an incorrectly transposed address and renumbering of lot numbers, which is due to, originally, this development was the second phase of Strathmore one subdivision. And it was, it ended up being split off, and now it's its own development. So the lot numbers did not get renumbered in the SAD, and this was caught through some of the street lighting processes that we've been, that we've been looking through. There is no cost change to any of the residents in Strathmore subdivision. However, per the requirements, we are going to notify all 129 homeowners by mail, as well as publishing in the newspaper.
Thank you, Ms. Kozak. Now, any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. We're going to do a roll call vote for this one. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Cuzmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
And supervisor Viviano.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, do we still vote electronically?
I think we do, just for the record.
Thank you.
But I heard all seven votes, and that motion carried. Moving on, item 14 is a request to approve the pathway abeyance for 54253 Fairchild Road, parcel number 0812200-033. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Kozak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The homeowner of this parcel is building a home on this property, where typically, a pathway would be required across the Fairchild frontage of the property. There are no other pathways in this area of the township or along Fairchild Road in this area. The pathway will be constructed in the future when other pathways are built in the area, which is the intent of the abeyance. And the right-of-way was previously dedicated because this was part of a parcel split of a larger parcel on that corner. So since our, due to these, all these reasons, we are recommending approval of the pathway abeyance.
Thank you, Ms. Kozak. Any questions or discussion from the board? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by treasurer Gillette, to approve the pathway abeyance for 54253 Fairchild Road, parcel number 0812-200-033. Members, please vote. That motion carries. Moving on, item 15 is a request to approve a pathway abeyance for 17780 24-mile road, parcel number 08-17-201-010. Ms. Kozak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This pathway abeyance request is actually a little bit different. This is actually the Riverview Estates site condominium development, which is on the southeast corner of 24 Mile and Romeo Plank. The developer has applied for a parcel split to split a portion along 24 Mile Road off, and he wants to eventually build a home on that parcel. He's requesting an abeyance for this, for only this portion of the pathway. The portion of the pathway along Romeo Plank will still be built with the development. The reason for the abeyance is because, once the home is built, there's concern that the traffic from the construction equipment will disturb the pathway, and there's really not a lot of sense in that. So the intent is that the pathway along 24 Mile will be put in when the home is constructed. The right-of-way for 24 Mile Road will be dedicated with the residential development. That is currently in engineering plan review, and that is one of the requirements on the item checklist. This abeyance is contingent upon the developer proceeding with the condominium project. And with that, we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Kozak. Any questions or discussion?
Support.
Yeah, there is. Oh, no, did I skip it? I apologize. I was looking at the wrong line. Okay, so we have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by clerk Posey. Okay, now, is there any discussion by the board?
Just one question.
Sure.
How long after the home or the project is completed do they usually have to complete the sidewalk?
You mean the home construction?
The home construction. After they're done, how long do they get, now that we're doing the abeyance now?
They would be required to build it as part of the home construction. So it would be shown on the plot plan for that home. The project wouldn't be inspected. And if the pathway is, until the pathway is installed, the project would not be released. The home cannot be occupied.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by clerk Posey, to approve the pathway abeyance for 17780 24-mile road, parcel number 08-17-201-101. Members, please vote. That motion carries. Moving on, item 16. We have a request, we have a request to approve change order number three for the 2020 pathway gap closure program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Kozak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As a result of the COVID pandemic, we've been faced with delays on our pathway gap closure program, not only on our 2021 pathway gap, or I'm sorry, 2020 pathway gap closure program, but also with our 2021 program. Then that's just due to, you know, engineering firms, you know, being out of work and surveying not being able to take place last year due to the pandemic restrictions. The design and construction documents are completed for the 2021 pathway gap closure program. However, we typically would have bid this project four and a half months ago. So we are late to the bidding process and late to the construction season at this point. In the meantime, we've been informed by contractors, and we've also seen it ourselves through several projects that we've bid out through the water and sewer department, that contractors are very busy. And with it being this late in the season, many of them don't have room in their schedule to allow for another construction project in order for it to be completed yet this year. The price of materials has skyrocketed due to high demand and low supply. And based on some projects that we recently bid out through water and sewer, we had three of them. One of them, we received no bidders. Another project, or two of the other projects, we received three bids each. And those projects came in $81,000 and $115,000 over the engineer's estimate. So we're definitely seeing some issues with bidding things later in the construction season at this point. Meanwhile, while we were putting together the 2021 pathway program bid documents, the contractor from the 2020 program contacted us, interested in extending the 2020 contract to include the 2021 areas at the same unit prices. So no changes to those unit prices in his contract. That contractor is DSS Macomb, and he is also committed to substantially completing this project by Labor Day and fully completing the project by mid-October. So we can still get it done yet this year if we proceed this way. Based on all of this, and we've carefully reviewed it and discussed it and made sure we were taking the proper protocols, we believe extending the 2020 pathway program to include the 2021 work is in the best interest of the township. And this could result in a cost savings of at least $16,000 based on the engineer's estimate and guarantee that we can still complete this work this year.
Thank you, Ms. Kozak. So any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve change order number three for the 2020 pathway gap closure program. Members, please vote. The motion carries. And item 17, request to authorize the township supervisor to sign a master agreement for the municipal street lighting with DTE Electric Company. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Kozak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Due to Macomb Township's recent change in township supervisor and legal counsel, DTE has asked Macomb Township to sign a new master agreement for municipal street lighting. This agreement has been reviewed by engineering as well as legal counsel, and the language is the same as what was in the agreement signed by the former supervisor. Legal counsel did ask for some revisions, some very minor revisions to be made, but DTE stated that this agreement is a standard form and is non-negotiable, and it's used in all of their communities. With that, we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Kozak. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, it's more of a comment. I want the residents to know that there was discussions regarding the amounts billed by DTE and Electric Company, and that pretty much it all falls on the head of the Michigan Public Service Commission, and that there's set tariffs and schedules on what can be charged. As in many other aspects of services and goods provided to the township, it is a monopoly. With that being said, that closes my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Cuzmano. Anything else? Hearing no more comments. We have a motion by clerk Posey, supported by treasurer Gillette, to authorize the township supervisor to sign the master agreement for municipal street lighting with DTE Electric Company. Members, please vote. And that motion carries. Moving on to item 18. We are seeking an authorization to extend and offer an employment in the fire department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. I'm here to request authorization to extend an offer of employment to Sam Falzerano. The Board of Trustees has authorized the HR department to recruit for the full-time firefighter position. This position was posted in compliance with the IAFF-CEBA agreement, and we received eight applications. Eight were all invited to interview: Chief Phillips, Deputy Chief Monroe, as well as myself and Sherlin Arf. We're on a selection committee. We are recommending Sam Falzerano for the full-time firefighter position. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. If approved, it's a contingent upon a successful completion of a post-offer, pre-hire physical exam, drug and alcohol screening, background check, and a psychological examination. We are targeting an effective date of hire on or after July 28th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Are there any questions or discussion from the board? All right, hearing none. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers, to authorize an offer and employment in the fire department to Sam... Can you pronounce his name again?
You want to pronounce it for us?
Palzerano.
Palzerano.
Members, please vote. That motion carries. Congratulations, Sam. Moving on to item 19. We are seeking to approve the township office holiday closure.
Again, thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
One second, Mr. Tabaka. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, now it's your turn.
All right. Again, thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. I'm requiring about the township's holiday closure for this year between Monday, December 27th, 2021, and Wednesday, December 29th, 2021. Based on previous research by the township, including a review of cost savings and availability to the public, the township has closed township offices between Christmas and New Year's Day. The treasurer's office has been open one day during this period to collect taxes, and suitable staffing arrangements are made with the fire department. This closure, with exceptions, has been negotiated with the appropriate unions. Notice of the closure by this action complies with the terms of the CBAs. Thank you for your consideration of the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion by clerk Posey, supported by treasurer Gillette, to approve the township office holiday closure. Members, please vote.
My screen is, pardon me, but my screen is gone.
Can you, can you take a verbal vote, trustee Nevers?
I'm sorry?
Can you do a verbal vote that will be recorded?
Yes.
Go ahead. Your vote?
She said yes. Is that a yes that you'll take?
Yes, it is. It is a yes.
Roger, you got that? All right, that motion passes. Moving on to item 20. We're seeking an authorization to approve an insurance broker. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka.
Again, thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. I'm here to recommend that TMR and Associates becomes our insurance broker for our benefits. The Board of Trustees has authorized the township to solicit bids for our health benefits. The offering was executed in accordance with our purchasing policy requirements. There were 163 notices sent, 26 plan takers, and five proposals submitted. An evaluation team consisting of the supervisor, HR director, a trustee, and the finance director independently reviewed and scored the proposals. The evaluations were based on qualifications and experience of the firm and qualifications and experience of the staff. The firms were narrowed down to the top three, and all three were conducted. Interviews were conducted. The evaluation committee reconvened and universally agreed to recommend the firm, TMR and Associates. Thank you for your consideration of the matter. If approved, TMR and Associates becomes our record of agent effective immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, a question to Mr. Tabaka. How is this different for the benefit of the residents from the way that it was handled previously? Did we have a broker before that we're changing out, or was it, was the insurance purchased ad hoc?
Yeah, we did have a previous insurance broker for the last several years.
Okay. And for purposes of the residents, how is the broker compensated? What compensation does the broker get? Is it from the township funds? Or is it, how does that work, if you know?
Do you want me to take that, Mr. Tabaka?
Please, supervisor.
The broker relationship, they receive a commission from the insurance carriers. It doesn't come out of the township funds. They have a schedule they work with. Most of them fluctuate depending on the individual broker's full book of business with those carriers. We had had the same carrier...
We had had the same carrier, or I'm sorry, brokers since fourteen, or was it earlier than that?
I believe it was around eleven years.
Around eleven years. And we decided to take it back out for bid. It hadn't been done so long a while. And we determined that TMR could represent our interests going forward in a way that we were... That would move us in where we need to go.
And is it anticipated to save any money to the township? Is that speculative at this point?
It is speculative at this point, but we hope with TMR's help and with the cooperation of our employees, we're going to work on restructuring our benefits programs so that everybody is happy and ultimately the township meets its financial obligations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzma. Anyone else? All right, hearing no more discussion, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve TMR as our new insurance broker. Members, please vote.
I have to do a voice vote, and it would be yes.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of information, how long is the term?
There's no... We're not locked into any set term. It's effectively year-to-year, but...
All right.
Much like some of our other service contracts, there is... If we wanted to make a change for whatever reason, we can.
Terminable at will?
Correct.
Thank you.
I think with a thirty or sixty-day notice, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. Sorry I didn't ask the question before the vote.
Well, we didn't try to log out again. Okay, moving on to item twenty-one, is a request to award a grant writing services agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, this item came to the board upon my request. Internally, we have been discussing trying to find enough resources within our township and enough time and energy to apply for the myriad of grants that seem to be available. But yet, our township has taken very little advantage of in its history. In learning about the opportunities through SEMCOG, which we're getting more involved in, we've begun to realize that we just don't have the manpower to really dedicate to finding these funds. So, after some internal discussion, we put out a request for bid. We received four proposals. The only one that met our criteria was Team Row. And we think that engaging their services will provide us with the time and... Well, they'll have the time and energy to dedicate to finding the funds for various projects that we just frankly don't have to get. Ultimately, we believe by going... Taking this... By engaging them in these services, we're going to receive exponentially more than we will be paying out. The term of their contract is for an initial six months so that we can test the program. It is for three thousand dollars a month. And then we can make a determination whether to extend or eliminate it after that. The contract is also terminable on thirty days' notice.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like to note that my experience both at the township and other levels is that grants can be very time-intensive to submit. You've got to gather a lot of information. You've got to monitor deadlines. And then if you... Even when you receive a grant, if you're fortunate enough, the follow-through with submitting subsequent documents to comply with the grant requirements can be very time-consuming. And in our experience, you know, the short experience here at this township, there's been a number of opportunities made... We've been aware of that we've missed deadlines because we didn't know the grant was available, that we had to juggle because we had to prioritize other, you know, grant opportunities. And we're hoping that having a coordinator, somebody specifically assigned to gather the needs of the township, survey the landscape, and organize the grant requests and execute those grant requests with the discipline, the follow-through, the calendar, and that sort of thing, will result in hopefully a substantial financial return to the township.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. I want to add to that. The other thing we've come to realize throughout applying for some of the things that we have is that there are... There's specific language that the people reviewing these grants look for, and having someone who has specialized in grant writing will give us an advantage in actually securing the grants we spend the time to apply for. That was another.
Also, I'd like to add to that, Mr. Chairman. The three of us have gone to several different communities to see some of their advancements and amenities that they have. And often while we were out, the people that we were visiting indicated that it was paid for by grant money. And we looked at each other like we're missing something here. So, there are several opportunities for amenities in the township that can potentially be paid with grant money, things that we hadn't even thought of before. So, I think this is a true benefit to both the board and the residents in the future.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Any questions from...
Just to follow up.
Sure.
So, this is going to be a contract employee?
A contract position, correct.
For six months?
Correct.
All right. We could... If we don't like him in a month, we could...
We don't like it? I honestly don't know if we'll be able to see results in six months.
Right.
But I think we'll start to get a good idea of how it's starting to go. But that's why I didn't want to do it for any longer. Didn't want to commit to anything more than we were comfortable with. I think it's a good test period. I'm very hopeful that we're going to see a lot of benefit from it.
I think we will. Thank you.
Supervisor Viviano, just as a caveat to what Mr. Gillette has said, years ago Janet Dunn and Roger Kryszminski and I attended a five-day class for grant writing. And even if we were really excellent at writing, it's all of the other intricacies involved with grant writing, deadlines. And if you just missed on one little thing, I mean, it just... It ended no matter how much work you had involved. I think this is a very sound idea. And if we're missing out on a lot of opportunities for grant writing, this is the way to go.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Any more discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to award the grant writing services agreement to Team Row. Members, please vote. Are we back up and running, Trustee Nevers? Okay, good. That motion passes. Moving on to item twenty-two, we have the... There is a motion to reappoint the library board members from McComb Township.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Nice try. I have my notes here real quick. Oh, so tonight, I am moving to reappoint both Camille Silda and Amy Wiley to the Clinton McComb Library Board. Both have been serving our community admirably since their initial appointment to the McComb Clinton Library Board. Both are officers on the board. They're both eager and enjoy their time. And, you know, it is... It's actually one of those positions that it's difficult to find people who are really willing to serve their community in this way. It's a volunteer position, and I think we're lucky to have them both. And with that, I guess that's all the most... Since we already have a motion, that's all I have. I am recommending reappointment. Thanks. Any questions? Okay, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to reappoint Camille Silda and Amy Wiley to the Clinton McComb Library Board. Members, please vote. Congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
Moving on to item twenty-three, we have a request to revoke the industrial facilities exemption certificate for Majestic Industries LLC at 51223 Quadrate Drive, certificate number two zero one nine zero two zero. Ms. Patterson?
So moved.
Oh, sorry about the motion.
Second.
Got excited, we're near the end.
Mr. Chairman and Board members, Majestic Industries was issued an industrial facilities tax exemption in 2019. They vacated the property in June of 2021. Since they no longer qualify for the IFT, the assessing department is requesting the board adopt a resolution to revoke the industrial facilities tax exemption as required by the State Tax Commission. I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Any questions or discussion from the board? And with this item, we'll be doing a roll call vote. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. All right, moving on to public comment. This is a public comment for non-agenda items. Like before, it is a three-minute time limit. Anyone present who wishes to speak can please approach the podium. If you are participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand, and you will be called upon. Seeing that there's nobody present wishes to speak, Mr. Ivanowski, is there anybody remotely who wants to participate?
No, sir, not currently.
Okay, seeing that there is no comment tonight, we will move on to board comments. Trustee Oliver, you're up.
A couple things. Camille, thank you for...
Amy.
Amy.
That's Amy.
Amy, I'm sorry. Knew you were one of them.
Fifty-fifty shot.
Shot at it, I'm sorry. Thank you for getting involved. It's good. It's good. We... I enjoy it. I enjoy seeing people get involved, and that's what makes our community roll. So, again, Amy, thank you. And did MedStar come in, or was that scheduled? Or did you invite him in, Mr. Viviano?
He didn't just wander in off the street.
I didn't think he did, but I just wandered.
I actually had a meeting with Mr. Miller about six or seven weeks ago. He wanted to come in and introduce himself. We hadn't actually met yet. At the time, he asked if he could come in and make a presentation, bring us up to speed on what their services are. So, yeah, I was...
That was good. It was good for me. I don't know if... I'm sure other board members liked it, because there's a lot of things that you wonder about in their procedure, in their process. And he spelled it out tonight and maybe gave us some ideas going forward. So, again, thank you, and I'm done.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Kuzma.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to congratulate and thank Amy for her service to the community. I've served on the board of McComb Community College without any compensation for nine years now, but it's some of the best work I've ever done, and it's most very satisfying. I also want to touch on this issue of SADs. Although it may seem to be repugnant to most people that won't pay more, I want everyone to be assured that improving infrastructure, including pavement to the roads and streets and subdivisions, improves the value of their homes in that subdivision and more than worth the investment, both for the current welfare of their vehicles from pothole damage and also from the standpoint of the value for resale and the value of the homes in the subdivision. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzma. Trustee Lucido.
I also would like to congratulate both of the library reappointees. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it. Also, congratulations to our newest firefighter. Thank you. Appreciate it. With regards to the insurance portion, I was on the committee where we selected the new insurance broker, and we narrowed it down to three. And I just wanted to say, all three were very qualified. I thought they were all terrific, and they would have served the township well. I ultimately decided on the one that we appointed to... That we chose tonight based on their... The amount of clients that they have in the municipality area. So, I do think that they'll serve us best of the three based on their experience with municipalities. So, congratulations to them as well, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Trustee Nevers?
Yes, I too am going to join in. Congratulations to both Amy and the other person who is not here. Shows dedication to your community, and I saw a lot of enthusiasm, and that's great to see. And I'd like to thank our IT people that jumped in so that I could vote electronically. I don't know what happened. I looked up, and the screen was gone. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Treasurer Gillette?
We... I'm also appreciative, of course, of our volunteers in the library who bring a great deal of expertise, and also appreciative of our new firefighter. I'm glad that we have a strong candidate who's joining our township, who's going to be a great asset to our township. And I'd also like to extend some appreciation to Trustee Lucido, along with the rest of the team that took the time to very carefully evaluate the insurance, you know, carrier opportunities, and narrow that down. It's probably a long time overdue that we revisited that and rebid that out. So, I think that's going to... I hope that... I'm sure that's going to make us for... Put us in a stronger position moving forward to provide for the township's needs. That's all I have.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind everybody that the clerk's office does offer free notary service. We get a lot of calls for our residents looking for someone to notarize documents for them, and it is a service that we offer in our department for free, no appointment necessary. And there is five of us in the office that are certified, so there is usually somebody available to do it at any time. I'd also like to congratulate the library board, Amy, and also Sam. Welcome to the fire department. And I want to wish the residents and those that are initiating the SAD for Chelsea Park the best of luck. I... That subdivision deserves it. They need it desperately, and I wish them luck in accomplishing the signatures so that they can move forward with that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. And I guess since everybody else did, I will too congratulate. Amy and Camille and Sam, congratulations all around. We appreciate, Sam, what you're going to be doing, and Camille and Amy, what you have been doing for us. I also want to make sure I make note of the work that our fire department and our sheriffs and our building officials have been making towards our marijuana... Medical marijuana program where we are searching out illegal grow operations in our communities and getting rid of them. We had... Continue to have success each and every week. It is a slow process because they keep popping up, kind of like rats, but the staff and the team that we put together is diligent, and they're committed, and eventually, we're going to win this out. So, thank you all for what you continue to do. And with that...
Motion to adjourn at...
I wasn't quite done.
I apologize.
I also wanted to note that tomorrow night, we have a concert. Hopefully... Did you want to say anything?
No, no, keep going.
Okay. We just want to make sure, hopefully, we get a break from the rain, and this week, as opposed to the last week where it rained us out, we will get a chance to have a concert at seven o'clock at McComb Corners. And if so, by some chance, it gets rained out again, hopefully you'll make it to the next one, next Thursday night. Same time, same place. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting at 7:58 PM on July fourteenth, 2021.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I think we could probably stretch this out a while.
Yeah, I'm thinking we should just walk through a few more things.
Hearing none, there is a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Kuzma, to adjourn tonight's meeting. Members, please vote.
Slowly.
Mr. Chairman, I had closed my screen.
You can voice vote.
Voice vote, yes.
Can we look that up and make sure?
Yes.
What is the result of the motion, Mr. Chair?
That motion passes at 7:59.